Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Clompfenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Deidre Nguyen.
Yeah.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. May I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do the invocation, followed by Councilmember Bowie to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us tonight as we welcome new city council members and recognize the service of those who are transitioning off the city council. We thank you for the service of all of our elected officials and staff and ask that you would guide us as we strive to build a better city. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing, facing the flags with your hand over the heart, and be fit after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. We will start with item 1A, which is Declaration of Results of the General Municipal Election and Seating of Elected Mayor and City Council Members. I'll hand it to the city clerk for the official title.
Mayor, item 1A is Adoption of a Resolution Reciting the Fact of the General Municipal Election Held on November 8, 2022, Declaring the Results and Such Other Matters as Provided by Law.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I move the motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Member Brightigam.
Yes.
Member O'Neal.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Clompfenstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. I would now like to extend the courtesy of the floor to Mayor Pro Tem Tuha Nguyen, and also then thereafter to Councilmember Bowie to say any marks they would like to say.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to my council colleagues and to the publics. It's my honor to serve your city council for the past six years, to be your colleagues sitting next to you on the dais for the past six years and to the staff working together. It's a bit sweet, but also I'm very happy that we have new council coming in. But for the past six years, I think the most thing that I cherish the most is the friendship that we have, that we built together on the dais. Because that's something we always bragging about when we look to the neighbor city, is that our city work cohesively among the council, among the staff, as well as with the constituents. We always work side by side, listen to the constituents, and be able to execute. And if you look at the past six years, City Garden Grove have grown a lot in terms of economic development. It's not just one Manam Army, it's the whole council, it's the whole staff, and as well as all the whole team together. That's something I cherish the most. But this is not the end of my public servant. I will continue to stay, engage, continue to work hard for City Garden Grove, and continue building bridges. I think that's what we're all about, every single day of our life. So I thank you to everybody, to staff, to my colleagues, and most important thing, thank you to constituents of City Garden Grove, especially District 3, who entrusting me to represent you for the past six years. And we move onward and upward, and we will see our city grow and will be one of the best cities in City Garden Grove. And one thing I have to say, we have a very good team. That's including all the police officers, the firefighters, the public works, and the economic development team. I have to highlight that. But thanks from the bottom of my heart, I will continue to be part of the city, we will continue to be your friends, and we will continue supporting all the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, Senator Janang Nguyen, and dignitaries in the chambers, and of course, dear Mayor Steve Jones, and honorable council members, the city management, city staffs, and residents of Garden Grove. I am truly humble and honored to have a golden opportunity to serve our city for the past eight years. First, elected in 2014, and then re-elected in 2018 for another four-year term. It's time for a fresh leadership every eight years as our city ordinance mandated. And for that, I would like to take a moment to send my heartfelt congratulations to Mayor Steve Jones, Council-Elected Councilmember George Brightigam, for your reelection, and also to the councilmembers Cindy Tran and Councilmember Joe Dovin of District 3 and 4. Serving the public is a privilege, not a right, and we are here because we earn the trust of the public. I sincerely wish all of you, the new city council, the very best and hope that you all will tread cautiously and respect the wishes of those who have elected you to serve. To Council-Elected Tran, I have known you for more than a decade. And Cindy is a person of good heart, who strive to listen and to serve the public. I'm certain she will be a good asset for our city council. As a public servant, we owe it to our constituents to do what is best for the residents and for the city as a whole. When I was elected in 2014, our city faced a few termites from a disfunctioning newly-elected mayor at that time, to the resignation of city manager and fire chief, and the retirement of our then-good chief of police. From that day on, I have made it clear that I would support these dissecting problems only to learn from it so we could make a better decisions. I'm very proud that our city council members had worked together to dissect those issue and resolved to turn the ship around, and we have been successful in turning such a hard time to a very successful outcome. While we had some moment of disagreement, we have always worked together professionally and with mutual respect. And I thank you to the leadership of Mayor Steve Jones and our council in 2016, and especially to then-newly-hired city manager, Mr. Scott Stye in 2015, is that right? And the new hire of city assistant city manager, Lisa Kim, in 2016, not long after that. And the experience of our city director. Not only we were able to stabilize our city financials, restoring public trust, but we have been able to foster a tremendous growth in hospitality and with the opening of many four-star hotel along Harbor Boulevard. Thank you, Mayor Jones, for taking the leadership on that effort. We oversaw a tremendous boom for small businesses and retails throughout our city. The completion of Prokhor's Village, formerly known as the Steel Skeleton. We realized a successful retail chain such as Steel Crafts and many others in Chapman-Prokhor's area along West Garden Grove. And we have built many new residential areas near Garden Grove Boulevard and Lewis Street, Prokhor's Triangle, just to name a few. We are determined to be steadfast and resilient in providing a solution to address homelessness issue and leading the effort to implement a navigation center for the homeless community for the three cities: Garden Grove, of course, Westminster, Fountain Valley. And thank you to Councilmember Ted Bowie of Fountain Valley, who present today, and thank you for your support in this issue. And now I would like to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation from my heart to city staffs, who have always been at the forefront to enable me serving the residents of our city. Especially thanks to city manager Scott Styes, assistant city manager Lisa Kim, and Maria Scribe, Ms. Terry Palmeroy, city clerk and staff of the city administration, our police chief, Tom Daughery, and former chief, Todd Elgin, and the officer of the Garden Grove Police Department, OCFA Division Chief Ron Roberts retired, and current division chief, Mr. Craig Covey, Mr. Bill Murray, Director of Public Works and Staff, Director Pakrisia Song and the staff of city finance, Director John Monsante of Community Services. And of course, one more time, Director Lisa Kim and the staff of Community and Economic Development, Director Laura Stauffer and staff of Human Resources, Mr. Danny Hui, Director and staff of the Garden Grove Housing Authority, Director Anand Rao and staff of Information Technology, who I and staff who I had privilege to work closely to implement a new ERP project, software, and system for our city. And of course, to Mrs. Pam Harat, city council clerk, and Minah Yu and Michi Sato, the clerk for the city management office. I also would like to take this moment to thank all the voters who had entrusted the city to me when you elected me in 2014 and re-elected me in 2018. I humbly hope that I have met up to your expectation. And thank you all for, during the past eight years, who had encouraged, praised, as well criticize me. I always treasure all of your input, as it guided me to serve you more effectively. And finally, I would like to express my special thanks to my family, my wife Mai and my son Mike, who have given me so much of your valuable family time, working days and nights during the election, and for the last few years, hardly seeing me around for our family. Thank you Mai and Mike for always being there for me and for enabling me to pursue my passion to serve. As I will embark on a new path, I will continue to serve our city, our community, and our nation. I will always be a focal aware should you need to bring an issue to the attention of our city council and city management. My cell phone number is 714-713-4079, and you are welcome to call me anytime between 9:00 a.m. and midnight.
Join your first line.
But not before 9:00 a.m. Again, again, thank you so much for your support over the years. Merry Christmas to all. May God bless you, our city, our nation, and may God bless you all. Thank you.
Before we move on, I just want to make a couple of brief comments. Fat and Tuha, it's been my extreme pleasure to serve with you both in recent years. Fat, your conservative fiscal leadership has put the city in a very strong financial position that we are today. We appreciate that and your oversight. Tuha, you absolutely exemplify public service, day in and day out for the last six years. You drive down south, you work your job, you race back, and you roll up your sleeves, and you feed people, and you serve, and you help out with numerous different things, and I've just seen that day in, day out. So, thank you both for the examples that you have set for the rest of us and for the positive impact that you guys have had on the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and I believe now we move on to the administration of oath of office for myself and the other newly-elected.
So now we will administer the oath of office to elected Mayor Jones and Deputy Chief Alfar, who will be doing the oath of office.
Mayor Jones, it's my honor and privilege to swear you in this evening. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Steve Jones.
Solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor Jones. We now continue with the oath of office administered to elected city council member Brightigam.
Okay, I'll just stand here. Alright Dad, it is my honor and privilege to administer the oath of office to you. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, George Brightigam.
Solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
True faith and allegiance to the Constitution. Let's start that one over.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilmember.
Next is Councilmember Cindy Tran.
I state your name.
I, Cindy Tran.
Solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemy.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take the obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you. I know the room is small, but I look around to see my teacher, my student, my boss, everybody.
Councilmember Joe Dovin.
Repeat after me. Congratulations. I state your name.
I, Joe Dovin.
Solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly affirm that I shall support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon.
Discharge the duty upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter. So help me God.
Amen. Thank you.
Alright, I'd like to just say a few words very briefly, and then I'll open the floor to my colleagues who were just sworn in as well. I'll keep it very short and simple. I'm forever grateful to the people of Garden Grove for entrusting me in this role for this brief moment in time that I've served, and it's been an honor for me. But most importantly, I would like to thank from the bottom of my heart my wife Manavani and my two boys Jaden and Ashton, who are here somewhere. For putting up with me and allowing me all the time-consuming efforts it takes to pour myself into this role. So, thank you guys for being here. Thank you to everyone. I'm looking forward to finishing out my last two years as mayor with vigor. And hopefully, we make a smooth transition and keep things moving forward in the right direction thereafter. With that, let me hand it over to my colleague George Brightigam to say a few words.
Yeah, I didn't prepare a fancy speech or anything. I'm very grateful to the citizens of the first district to reelect me to office to another four-year term. Again, plan on hitting the ground running, so to speak. We've got a lot of things. You know, my campaign promise, strong public safety. Our PD is probably the best PD in the nation. I'll put this Garden Grove Police Department against any police department in this country, and I guarantee you, they will shine. We're going to support them in every way we can. We're going to, we're going to start legitimately addressing the homeless problem in this city. With this navigation center coming soon to fruition, we're going to be able to actually start doing some things to help with that problem instead of just shuffling things around. I think that's going to be a big, big improvement. Public art, my commitment to public art. We're going to make, you know, that happen. You've seen the boxes going throughout the city, the painted utility boxes, not just in the first district. We put them in District 5, District 6, District 3. We're, you know, we're getting at, and, you know, we're going to, we're going to just keep trudging along full speed ahead. I do want to give a shout out my wife, Lisa, and my son George, and my daughter Julie, they're here. And my buddy Chris, sitting there, Chris Beard, former councilman, but no, really, you know. You know, without supporting your family, it's hard to do this job because you're, you have to spend a lot of time away, a lot of time doing things, and sometimes you're not there when you need to be. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Councilmember Cindy Tran.
Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude to all city residents in District 3, friends and family, might not be in District 3, but have supported me the whole time. During the election, I have knocked on many doors and met many outstanding citizens. I got to hear your concern and receive your encouragement. I'm absolutely overwhelmed with the love and support from many of you. Thank you. There are many more people and group that have supported me. I probably would take an hour or longer just to mention all them, but I want to shout out to my Captain Cozy, U.S. Navy, my first commander, and Colonel Sam Hobbin, U.S. Air Force, for their endorsement. Thanks to Councilman Fat Bowie, my colonel, my commander over there, Colonel Sutter, our deputy, Ms. Roachar. If it was not because Ms. Roachar signing up the approval for me to submit my application, I wouldn't be here. So, thank you so much. And all of you, 2,125 voter who cast the vote to put me up here. Thanks to my parents, my in-law, brother and sister, especially my dad, Gom Eng Ba, for helping me. Thanks for many church group, teacher, parent, community leader, youth group, and nonprofit group who have been there supporting me all the way. Thanks to my husband and my three children for their unconditional love, so that I would have the time and energy to serve others. Congratulations to my friend here, George, Joe, and our mayor, Steve. I'm deeply honored and humble to be selected and looking forward to working with this amazing board. Some of you already reached out and provide your support and guidance, so thank you so much. And I'm thrilled to be part of this growing city. I'm excited, and I cannot wait to work with the mayor, council member, and the staff to make our city a better place. Thank you.
Councilmember Joe Dovin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. If I may stand, I won't take long. First off, I'd like to congratulate the mayor. In Vietnamese, we have a saying, "Bac Chieng, Tuy Nhung Thanh." We run number 10. That's the ultimate victory to fight, to win without having to fight. So, congratulations, Mayor. Congratulations, George Brightigam, who I sat on the planning commission some 10 years ago. He's been in public. sat on the Planning Commission some ten years ago. He's been in public service for a long time, and the margin of victory means he has a mandate, so I'm gonna get behind him. Also, Cindy Tran, I congratulate you because your first run, I think. If I could win my first election, that would have been sixteen years ago. So, I totally respect your, your victory, your very first campaign, and you won by a very impressive margin. So, congratulations. For myself, this is my third run, uh, and my first elected office, and that's all thanks to you, the supporters. Everybody in this room made a difference to this city, and to me. I will be here, working for you. Lastly, I want to spend a minute to honor all those that we've lost over the years. I've run multiple races. I've had many supporters. Some of them are no longer with us. We've lost many good people during COVID, the most recent one in our very own city. And it breaks my heart that they're not here with us, but I'll never forget them, and I know you won't. I don't remember every name, but there are brothers and sisters, cousins, friends, grandparents that are not here with us anymore. So, I wanna thank them, 'cause they're still looking down on us. They're taking care of us, and we're gonna take care of each other. So, I appreciate the honor to be here as your public servant. As long as you entrust me with this office, I will do my best to serve you. Lastly, I want to thank my parents, my mother-in-law, father-in-law, his brother, and my brother, David Dovin. Please stand up. He started me in politics, being the first elected in the Dovin family as president of his high school class. And that's how I caught the bug to run. I became student president, and I never looked back. I kept going and going and going, and here I am today. So, thank you very much. It's been an honor to accept your congratulations, and I wish to see off the last two councilmember with a lot of respect and appreciation for everything you've done for this city and for our communities. Thank you.
Well, congratulations and welcome to our Garden Grove City Council and our.
Sorry, one more person I have to take. The person who's wearing me in. Former councilwoman, Dean Nguyen, please. And our daughter. I would be homeless tonight if I didn't thank her. Thank you, my love.
All right. So, we'll dive into our agenda, and the first several items that you will hear are actually more fun. So, community spotlights under presentation. So, we'll start with item two A. This is a community spotlight recognizing Mayor Pro Tem, Deidre Tuha Nguyen.
Okay. And actually, I'm gonna combine our two community spotlights and ask both Mayor Pro Tem, Deidre Tuha Nguyen, and former councilmember, Fat Buoy, to please come forward and stand in the front by the podium. Okay. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council has the pleasure to present two very special community spotlights honoring our Mayor Pro Tem, Deidre Tuha Nguyen, and councilmember, Patrick Fat Buoy, for their many years of exceptional service to the city and community of Garden Grove. We're gonna start with Mayor Pro Tem, Deidre Tuha Nguyen, from District Three. Born in Saigon, Vietnam, Tuha has been a resident of Garden Grove since 1995. She graduated from UC Irvine with a bachelor's degree in biological science and a master's degree in clinical genetics from Cal State Dominguez Hills. Tuha is currently a supervisor at Quest Diagnostics for the hematology oncology department. A lifelong activist and voice for the Vietnamese community, Mayor Pro Tem, Deidre Tuha Nguyen, was elected to the Garden Grove City Council on November eighth, 2016. I remember it well. She has been an active board member and volunteer for the League of California Cities, Orange County Division, Library Advisory Board for Orange County Public Libraries, Lunar New Year Tet Festival, South Vietnamese Marines Veteran Charities Association, and Hurricane Huyan. As a Garden Grove City Council member, one of Mayor Pro Tem, Deidre Tuha Nguyen's community goals was to foster relationships with businesses and organizations. In 2019, Mayor Pro Tem, Tuha, visited our sister city, Anhong, Republic of Korea, to celebrate the opening of the Anhong Public Art Project Festival, and she shared with them our own process of reimagining our downtown area with temporary and permanent art installations. Mayor Pro Tem, Tuha, was also a strong advocate for Measure O to enhance public safety and strengthen critical government services and provide public resources for the benefit of Garden Grove. I also know that there are two additional accomplishments in District Three that Mayor Pro Tem, Tuha, takes great pride in, and that includes the recent opening of the beautiful Garden Brook Senior Village, formerly the Rusty Skeleton, and also the transformation of the Pavilion Plaza West Shopping Center, which includes the city's first Sprouts Farmers Market and many new restaurants and businesses. So, congratulations and thank you for all your work on all of these projects and all of these endeavors. Next, we're going to have City Councilmember Patrick Fat Buoy be honored for his work in District Four. And Councilmember Buoy was born also in Saigon, Vietnam, and his family left North Vietnam in 1954. He moved to Minneapolis, Minnesota in 1975, where he attended the University of Minnesota and triple majored in mathematics, physics, and electrical engineering. So, we have, like, some really smart members of our city council, and I think Garden Grove is very fortunate to be in such good hands. In 1984, Fat moved to Garden Grove and married his wife Mai in 1993. He served as a Garden Grove Planning Commissioner from 2010 to 2012. In 2014, he was elected to the Garden Grove City Council. And as an active member of the community, Councilmember Buoy has been involved in different committees, such as the Association of California Cities, Coalition to Abolish Modern Day Slavery in Asia, Little Saigon Foundation, Garden Grove Sanitary District, Union of Vietnamese Student Associations of Southern California, Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California, and Vietnamese American Cultural Center. During Councilmember Buoy's term, he promoted better communication between the city, its citizens, businesses, and investors to ensure progress and better future for Garden Grove. In collaboration with investors, Councilmember Buoy was instrumental in bringing new development to Garden Grove, such as the Brokurs Triangle, the city's largest residential and commercial mixed-use development, as well as the Korean Garden within the Brokurs Triangle, and soon to open Home Two Suites by Hilton. Both Mayor Pro Tem, Deidre Tuha Nguyen, and Councilmember Patrick Fat Buoy also championed projects significant to the Vietnamese community, such as the dedication of new street signs on Bolsa Avenue for Vietnam's former king and general from the 13th century Tran Dynasty, Trung Hằng Đô. Sorry. And a street renaming and statue unveiling for Emperor Quang Trung at the Business Center Parkway off of Euclid. At this time, the Garden Grove City Council would like to express its deepest thanks to their esteemed city council colleagues and present Mayor Pro Tem, Deidre Tuha Nguyen, and Councilmember Patrick Fat Buoy with crystal mementos. On behalf of the city council, city staff, and community of Garden Grove, we wish Tuha and Fat the very best and look forward to celebrating many more of their future successes, outstanding service as dedicated members of the Garden Grove community. Thank you so much for your service and congratulations.
Hold on. Tuha Fat, before you sit down, hang tight one sec. There's two people I'd like to bring forward that I believe wanna present certificates to you guys. So, Phong Lee, representing Congressman Alan Loewenthal, and then also Van Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. Tonight, I'm honored to be here on behalf of Congressman Alan Loewenthal to recognize the two outgoing members of the City Council, former Mayor Pro Tem, Deidra Tuhang Nguyen, and former Councilman, Patrick Fat Buoy. And also, I just wanna say congratulations to Mr. Mayor for your reelection, and also welcome the returning of Councilman George Brightigam, and also two councilmember new to this council, Cindy Tran and Councilman Joe Dovin. Best wishes to all of you. And on behalf of Congressman Loewenthal, I'd like to present a certificate of recognition to Councilman from District Three, I'm sorry, Councilwoman from District Three, Deidra Tuhang Nguyen, and Councilman from District Four, Patrick Fat Buoy. And thank you for your service to the city.
All righty, thank you. We do have one more community spotlight. This is for Police Chief Tom Deray. But before we move on to that, I need to pull out of order item five A from the consent calendar to take action on that. Can I get a motion in a second for consent?
Second.
Call to vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Dovin?
Yes.
Councilmember Clompfenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All righty, we will proceed to item two C. This is a community spotlight in recognition of Police Chief Tom Deray on his upcoming retirement.
Okay, great. Now, the Garden Grove City. Hi, Chief. So good to see you tonight. Now, the Garden Grove City Council takes immense pride in honoring Police Chief Tom Deray as he retires from the city of Garden Grove following thirty-two years of illustrious service to the Garden Grove Police Department. Chief Deray was born, raised, and educated in Garden Grove, dedicating his entire law enforcement career to serving and protecting his hometown for thirty-two years. A proud graduate of Garden Grove High School, Tom joined the Garden Grove, City of Garden Grove in 1990 as a police cadet, becoming a reserve police officer later, and hired as a police recruit in 1992. He later became a patrol officer and then master officer, working in the Special Investigations and Gang Suppression Units before being promoted to sergeant in 2002. In 2015, he became the East-West Patrol Division Lieutenant in charge of Special Resources Team Homeless Task Force, or the SRT, and the Garden Grove, Grove District, Anaheim Resort. In 2017, he ascended to captain and was assigned to managing the largest division in, of the police department that includes patrol, gangs, traffic unit, narcotics, and SWAT. On April twentieth, 2019, Tom became Garden Grove's thirteenth chief of police. His many accomplishments as chief included advocating for an increase in the number of sworn police officers, creating the Community Impact Unit, expanding the Special Resources Team and commercial enforcement within the Neighborhood Traffic Unit, and leading the city's Emergency Operations Center as director, as the director during the COVID-19 crisis and pandemic. Chief Deray has been deservedly honored with numerous awards and commendations from the Garden Grove Police Department, including the Medal of Courage, the Medal of Merit, and Class A commendations. On December thirty-first, 2022, our hometown police chief, Tom Deray, will retire from the city of Garden Grove following thirty-two years of service to the Garden Grove Police Department, his community, and generations of Garden Grove police personnel. His commitment, professionalism, leadership, strength, and loyalty to Garden Grove have been second to none and will always be deeply treasured and appreciated. And so, at this time, the Garden Grove City Council would like to present Police Chief Tom Deray with a resolution of commendation for his more than three decades of meritorious service to the city of Garden Grove. We all wish him many wonderful years of retirement with his very beautiful wife, Janine, and family. Congratulations and thank you, Chief.
Right here, a couple shots.
Right here, a couple shots.
I haven't seen a room this packed. So I get anxiety when I see it this packed. It's like I had to come ask for something. Well, thank you. First and foremost, I would like to thank my wife. She's the one that held the house down. I probably wouldn't be here talking to you all today. I wouldn't have been able to lead this department or do a lot of things in my career if it wasn't for her. Even though I worried about, I worried about home, making sure everything was okay. She was there to stand there, so she was the rock. And so I got to concentrate on my career. I want to say thank you to the City Council, the friendships that I've made with you, but, or, we can't even, you know, say what they are, but, but the friendships each and every one of you that I have with you are incredible. But the one thing I do want to thank you about is the support that you have given to this police department. It's, it's something that we don't see in other cities. And I look back at, I actually remember when, when Chief Elgin was up here talking and he talked about, you know, our police department. And we didn't have a lot of toys. When, when police say that, it's, we don't have a lot of equipment to handle what we need to handle in this city. And you all made that possible and put our police department back in the twenty-first century with equipment. So thank you for that. To the City Manager, thank you for giving me the opportunity to lead this department. It really is a dream come true that, I grew up in this city, went to school here, have family here. And I've been able to not only police it and keep it safe, but lead this organization and, and basically protect the, the community that, that we all serve. And then, to my central management team, you know, what great fun we've had, even though we, we work hard and, and we collaborate on a lot of different things and we get it done. And, but the friendships that we made, the fun we've had. And it's, I'm going to miss that. So thank you, thank you for those memories. To my police department family, that's probably going to be the hardest. The friendships that I've made, the family environment that we have is, is second to none in, in organizations. And this police department really does a fantastic job of interacting with the community and having a relationship with the community. It's just something special. And always focus on customer service and, and doing what we can to make sure that, that we do whatever we can to, to serve this public and, and make sure they're safe, lowering crime stats. So with that, I know you guys all have a long meeting today. Thank God I will not be here till eleven at night. Thank you all. It's been a great time. Thank you to my police department family for being here. And thank you all. It's been an honor. Thank you. Chief. I will not give my cellphone out.
Chief, Chief, please stay put for one moment. We do have several people who'd like to come up and present certificates. So, Van Gordon from the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. Or else, Fong Lee, would you like to come forward?
Hello, Chief. I was looking for you in the room, but I couldn't find you because you're not in your uniform today. But I, I remember when, when I started working for Congressman Loewenthal, we reach out to Chief Deray. At that time, you were not chief yet. But you supported us with the event that we had for the congressman when we first came into Garden Grove. And ever since that time, we have always enjoyed great support from the city, from the police department for all of the events that we have done. And just want to say thank you on behalf of Congressman Loewenthal and want to wish you all the very best on your retirement. So on behalf of Congressman Loewenthal, I'd like to present you a certificate of recognition. And once again, thank you and best wishes to you.
Thank you.
Next up, Kim Vandermeaton from Michelle Steele's office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for having me tonight. It's an honor to be here on behalf of the Congresswoman to present you with a huge frame and certificate. You know, the Congresswoman is so proud of you. And, you know, I think hometown hero really is the best way to describe you. And we're very thankful to you. And the Congresswoman is a huge supporter of all the members of your department here tonight and you. We wish you the best in retirement and thank you for all you've done.
Thank you so much.
And is Van around from Chamber of Commerce or no? Yeah. Okay. Alright.
That's okay.
Thank you, Chief. You're good to go. Oh, would you like to? Oh, hang tight one sec. You're not off the hook yet. We've got colleagues who would like to make comments. Kim Nguyen, go ahead.
Chief, this is a very sad moment to see you gone. You were supposed to wait for me to be termed out first. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I remember when you were first getting appointed to chief and we had a coffee date. And I just appreciate the time that you've took to get to know me, to work with me, and to pay attention to all of the issues that I find important, especially in District Six, but also for always treating me with respect. And despite my age, for always treating me like the councilwoman. And more than anything, for becoming my friend over the last six years. I'm really grateful for your leadership and your support. And who am I going to text now? Or send funny gifts to? You'll be sorely missed. You are an exemplary leader and I know that your team will miss you as well. And just know that whatever you've instilled in them will continue on. You have a legacy that will live longer. And so we're so grateful for you and I'm sad to see you go, but thank you so much.
Well, you will have the next chief. Hopefully, we announce that pretty soon.
I know, but this is about you right now. We'll give him kudos later. This is about you. Love you, Chief. We'll miss you.
Alright, thank you. Stephanie, go ahead.
Well, for one thing, you're definitely Garden Grove through and through. That is for sure. I think everything that you've done has shown and really pinpointed how much you love this community, you love the people. Don't cry, Stephanie. I just want to thank you very much for your leadership. I know that I, I've really looked up to you and, and everything that you've done. You love this police department with, with all that you are. And that really is shown in the years that you've been chief. So just thank you for loving Garden Grove and for your dedication to the department and to the city. You'll, you'll be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Jill, go ahead.
I would actually want to congratulate you on your distinguished service and retirement and hope you will be around long enough to help us pick the next chief. We're looking internally to promote and not go out of the department. So thank you for, all are men and women in blue. Under your leadership, have served the city very well. And we look forward to your successor being as successful as you have been. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bert?
Well, what can I say, Chief? No more twelve AM texts. Unlike Fat, you can't text after nine.
I learned, I learned do not disturb.
But again, I want to congratulate you. You, you know, you've had a very honorable career. You've done some wonderful things. And quite frankly, your commitment to this community is unsurpassed. You, you've just been there for every one of us, for every one of our community members, and more so for every one of these officers back here. So, kudos on the retirement, well earned. And thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you so much.
Chief, well done. You made it. Alright, very stellar career. Thank you for always being there at those text messages, late at night, early in the morning, whenever something's going down. We got to know something right away. Council can rely on you to, to help us out. St. Columban boy, I went to St. Columbas. I think you were a few years behind me, so it's not fair that you're retiring before me. But, no, it's good. You know, we're, we're community-driven up here. And it's, it's, it's an honor and pleasure. And you've done such a great job. And you're, you took over from Todd. You know, it was a smooth transition and it's a smooth transition from now on. So we really appreciate everything you've done. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Chief. And I didn't get a chance to work with you, but see all the men and women behind you. Just see that, an awesome thing that you have done for the community and for the people that you work with. So, best with and happy retirement.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Now you're off the hook and missed out.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, oh, you're not off the hook yet. City Manager Scott Stiles.
I just, just wanted to make a couple brief comments. You know, I had, when I was getting ready to make this appointment of Chief Deray, I had never appointed a police chief before. And, you know, you're nervous about making an appointment like that because it's such an important position in the city. And when I, when I hired Chief Deray, he has exceeded all expectations of anything that we could have imagined in a police chief. The one thing I want to say to the community is, and we kind of glossed over it a little bit, but Chief Deray led our emergency operations in responding to COVID for almost two years. And we had, as a COVID response team, we had meetings every week. Sometimes in the height of COVID, we had, we were meeting twice a week trying to respond to different things. And of course, you know, we lost Lieutenant John Reynolds to COVID. So it was a very, very difficult time that we had to work through with the community. And Chief Deray was the person that led our internal team throughout. So, you know, none of us should ever forget that. You know, I had a great experience working with both Chief Elgin and Chief Deray in working to build our department back up, add more officers, thanks to the citizens who helped us approve Measure O. And Chief Deray was just a wonderful in, as he indicated, bringing the department back to where it needed to be. And so, you know, I want to say he's always been extremely professional and just, just a consummate pro. You know, we had many text messages, phone calls in the middle of the night. We went through some pretty difficult times from time to time. But as Chief, you indicated, we had a lot of good memories working together as a central management team. And we celebrated a lot when we could. So, I'll always appreciate you and congratulations on retirement.
Thank you, Scott.
Awesome. And with that, we're going to take a, we're going to take a break. We're going to recess the City Council meeting. We invite everyone to come over to the meeting room on the other side of the building for a reception for a bit. And then we'll reconvene thereafter. Thank you.
Night that we're having. I'm going to go out of order again, so next I'm going to take item four, which is reorganization, for A, our selection of Mayor Pro Tem. Colleagues?
I'd like to nominate George Bridingham. I'll second.
Thank you.
You accept? I'll call for the question.
Sounds good. Can we do a vote? Call the vote.
Councilmember Bridegum.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Tran.
Yes.
Councilmember Dovin.
I'll vote again.
Councilmember Clumpinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Congratulations. You did a great job, boy.
Now you've got to start showing up to everything.
Alright, we'll go back to oral communications. I don't know if anybody's still left here, but we'll go to cards that we have. Teresa Tran, please come forward.
Please let me know if you can hear me. Alright, awesome. It's my first time doing this. Let me know when my two minutes are starting, or if they're already started.
You get three.
I get three? Oh, fantastic. Alright, fantastic. Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Tran, and I first wanted to start it off saying congratulations to the newly-elected members of City Council and re-elected members of City Council. Oops. I'm so excited to see the amazing work that you all will be doing this upcoming year, and thank you so much for serving our city. And also, behind me, just wanted to say thank you to Chris Beard as well, and Yijia Tuha for your amazing work in City Council. Patrick Ruiz, I don't know if he's here, but thank you to him too. So, I have been a Garden Grove resident all my life, and I also do work as a community agent coordinator at a nonprofit called Waymakers. So, Waymakers works with local residents and families to help make garden growth a smoke-free environment through public health policy. So, we educate the community about the dangers of tobacco use and secondhand smoke exposure as it increases one's risk of health problems such as cancer, and heart and respiratory diseases, stroke, pregnancy complications, and so much more. So, tobacco use is the leading preventable cause of cancer and cancerous deaths, and I'm here today because I have family members who've been addicted to tobacco products ever since they were children, and I've also had family members that passed away from cancer. And I want to help prevent any other families from suffering the loss of a loved one due to cancer, especially when we know it could be prevented. I probably should have mentioned that you also have a brief, probably, in your hands as well, and that has the context, yes, to my boss's number, but also a letter just to update you about the issue, and also a brief just to highlight the issues about tobacco and secondhand smoke. And according to the CDC, every year approximately half a million people die from tobacco-related diseases. Forty-one thousand of those deaths are from secondhand smoke. Exposure to tobacco smoke in apartments should be considered a major health concern, especially for those who live in affordable housing and can't move out of these housing because they can't afford the premium rentals that have smoke-free units as an amenity. We believe that having a smoke-free home should be a health equity, it's a health equity issue, and it shouldn't be something that should come at a cost of premium. According to, our statistic is that there's 31.2% of Garden Grove residents who reported living in multi-unit housing, which means approximately 53,648 people lack protection against secondhand smoke in the city of Garden Grove. And there's a trend in the state of California to become tobacco-free. Last month, there was an overwhelming amount of support for Proposition 31 to regulate tobacco products and flavors with almost 4.5 million votes. The public wants their children to grow up in an environment where they're protected from the dangers of tobacco and e-cigarettes. And I believe we need to effectively protect some of our most vulnerable people who live in concentrated housing in the city of Garden Grove. And I wanted to ask to meet with you all at the end of, before the end of January, I know the holidays are coming up, to talk about this issue and how residents share their stories about the negative effects about secondhand smoke. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mina Yu. Just kidding, she didn't really put in a card. I just wanted, I just wanted to see the look on her face. Nicholas Dibs, you're up.
Did you call me already, or?
Nope.
Your time's up.
Just now.
Your time started.
I like it better when this was off.
Well, Mayor Jones, members of the council, excuse me. My name is Nicholas Dibs. I'm a teacher and an educator. I want to congratulate the new council members. It's often said, "It takes a village to raise a child." Our precious asset here are our children. We have to protect them, and they're being bullied on internet, on Instagram, on Facebook, on all kinds of things, and challenges. The screen time addiction is a problem. I spoke at the last council meeting about the importance of AB 2273 authored by Governor Newsom, where he says, I quote, Governor Newsom says, "We're taking aggressive action in California to protect the health and well-being of our kids. As a father of four, I'm familiar with the real issues our children are experiencing online. As a parent, I'm terrified of the effects technology addiction and saturation are having on our children and their mental health." So, there's a number of things, research has been done. There's with a problem with fentanyl, screen addiction, esports are a problem. I want to urge this council, and Scott Stiles, the city manager, to not promote esports anymore because it's harming the children. And their study is out about that. 62% of the young people participating in esports are having psychological problems. Screen time damages the brain. This is from Dr. Victoria Dunkley, MD. Then we have the fentanyl problem, The Song for Charlie, a national family-run nonprofit charity. Utah passes a law making iPhones filter porn so that the kids don't see that stuff. How gambling disorder is defined, gaming, excuse me, gaming, gambling disorder and gaming disorder is part of the problem of the esports. When kids are home from school, pornography searches increase 4,700%. All kinds of things going on. What we need is this city, and I've advocated it before, and I hope our new members will back it, and we need a wellness, youth wellness advisory committee. It takes a village to raise a child. I need a motion out of this council at the next meeting or tonight, put it on the agenda. We should have a youth advisory commission that we pool the resources, because the school district can't do it on its own, the city can't. We need to work together, bring in businesses, industry, parents, community groups, and have a youth wellness advisory committee or commission, because these problems, and I'm going to, at the next meetings, I'll go through and provide more details. For now, it's just kind of an overview. But it takes a village to raise a child. We need to have Hope Squad. Irvine Unified School District has that. We need all kinds of things, but we need a central place to do this. So, please support that, and I have some handouts for you also. Thank you for listening, Mayor, and the council members.
Thank you, sir. Grace Lee.
Good evening, City Council members. Really good to see you all, and congratulations to all the new folks as well. My name is Grace Lee, and I wanted to bring your attention back to the brief in the folders that we had provided you earlier. So, the brief that you have in your hands does give you more information as well as some data that we've collected from our committee members. So, thank you for considering the concerns of the Garden Grove residents. Between 2019 and 2020, we collected some opinion surveys in Garden Grove and received 70 responses from our Garden Grove community. 99% said that secondhand smoke and thirdhand smoke is harmful to others and their neighbors. 89% said they would support the policy requiring units in a building to be smoke-free, and 87% said they prefer to live in a smoke-free multifamily housing. Now, I'm going to speak on behalf of some residents that wanted to come today but unfortunately couldn't make it in person to share their stories with you. Resident one, I have a seven-year-old. I take him out and spend most of the day outside our residence because of the strong smoke smell. We have reported to our management, but no action. Resident two, my oldest son has seasonal allergies and asthma and doesn't do well around secondhand or direct smoke. I worry about his health when there is that type of exposure. We really wish there's a way to enforce a smoke-free zone so that we have a chance to live longer and decrease the risk of getting lung cancer. I am not a fan of secondhand smoke. Other Garden Grove residents shared testimonials about how secondhand smoke made them feel sick, uncomfortable, or that smog was so bad that their health was at risk. Our residents stated that their health was so badly affected that one of them even got pharyngitis from secondhand smoke. In the past several months, we have collected an additional 74 statements of concerns, and there is ongoing support from residents, Garden Grove Unified School District teachers, apartment managers, and other active community members, including a former City Council member who's joining us here today. 64 other municipalities have also enacted a smoke-free multifamily housing policy at their city or county level, and Garden Grove can also take the step to get ahead. We invite you to join us in this community effort to address the needs of our residents. Our asses to meet with you by the end of January to address and to share more about the concerns from our residents, and to hopefully speak with you each to share a little bit more. Other community residents will also be coming in the next meetings to join and to share more on their behalf. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Maureen Blackman.
Hello, I'm Maureen Blackman, District Three. Congratulations, I wanted to congratulate George for his reelection, Cindy for her election, Joe for his, but I also wanted to thank all of those that put their hat in, their money, their time, their effort to give to the city. It's great to be a winner, but the effort is still just as great on those that didn't make it, so I want to thank those that did. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Who did not turn in a card? You're thinking about it, huh? You're thinking about it.
Please, yes, please, of course. Chris Beard, Garden Grove resident. It is a pleasure and an honor to be here, and thank you for allowing me to speak and to offer my congratulations. You've heard enough of that, but can you really hear enough of that? You've really earned your positions here. Re-election for George, thanks for the shout-out, by the way. John, it's always good to see you. I always enjoyed sitting next to you and your wise counsel and every... To the newest member, you're in a quite a capable group of colleagues, supportive. You know, you may have differences, but you'd never be disagreeable amongst all of you. The best mayor I've ever, one of the best mayors. I pay tribute to the other mayors I worked with, but truly, Steve, you are truly deserving of being reelected. The people honor you, they respect you. You've done a fantastic job, and you continue to do that for the next two years. Joe, it's a pleasure seeing you. Congratulations, you made it after the third attempt. It's effort, effort, effort which makes it possible, but it's talking to people and knowing what's on their minds and how you can represent them, and I think you have proven your experience by going through that course. Stephanie, again, a pleasure. I know you didn't get reelected, but I'm so glad you're up there, working together as a team. It was always good working as a team. I should have started with the Honorable Counsel and the Honorable Mayor, and the Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, and I do mean that. You guys are the best. I enjoyed working with you, and I look forward to working with you as needed or called upon as a citizen. And you have a top-notch group of professionals. I didn't have to tell you that, but the public needs to be aware. It's the people behind there. It's the 600 people who are working for this city who do it every day. I mean, you are the figureheads, you set the policy, they are the actual workers, you have a great city manager, a great economic development director, assistant city managers, city attorney, city clerk's office, I'm partial to, so I just want to say congratulations. Best of luck to you. I hope to come before you again at another council meeting. A couple of other speakers mentioned an issue that's coming before you. I think it's worthwhile for your attention. It's related to smoking. It's a personal issue to me. It involved, I was a smoker, I've always been adamant against smoking since then, or... I've always been adamant against smoking since then, or most smokers want to quit. This is a means to help them do that. It's a help, it's a means to help other residents in the city. I think it has low impact for implementing, but it's worthwhile. And so I just ask you to take a look at it down the road. Maybe meet with these people, study some of the facts. I think it's worth your attention. So with that, I want to say again, congratulations. It's good seeing everybody again. It's a great homecoming for me. Thank you all.
Hey, Chris. Hey, Chris, if you're up for subbing in for this game, we got a, we got a vacant seat here for... Thanks, Chris. All right, that's all the cards I have. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, if not, we will close oral communications. And then, whoops, I just goofed. How do I get back? All right. We're going to recess over to our other agencies. So next, we'll go to successor agency. Sometimes it automatically does it. I'll go ahead and convene the successor agency meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Bredegum?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin? Member Klavitsen?
Here.
Member Nguyen is absent, and Mayor Jones?
Here. All right, we already did oral communication simultaneously with city council. Next is reorganization, selection of chair and vice chair. I've been the chair. I believe Fat Buie was the vice chair. Is that correct?
John O'Neill. Yeah, it is.
Wait.
Yes, we had, remember Buie was vice chair.
All right.
Do you want to stand as chair?
Sure.
I'll move that we keep you as chair.
Thank you. Roll call, vote.
Member Bredegum?
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Tran?
Yes.
Member Dovin?
Yes.
Member Klavitsen?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Anyone like to be vice chair of the successor agency?
I move John O'Neill.
Thank you, I accept.
All right, call to vote?
Member Bredegum?
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Tran?
Yes.
Member Dovin?
Yes.
Member Klavitsen?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All right, takes us on to consent items. Just receive and file the minutes from November 15th. Call to vote?
Member Bredegum?
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Tran?
Yes.
Member Dovin?
Yes.
Member Klavitsen?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and go over to Industrial Development Authority.
All right, I'll call the Industrial Development Authority regular meeting to order. Our annual meeting, this is a one-meeting-a-year type of meeting at the present moment. So if the clerk could call roll for that.
Member Bredegum?
Here.
Member Tran?
Yeah.
Member Dovin?
Here.
Member Klavitsen?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
And Chair O'Neill?
Here.
And Vice Chair Nguyen is absent.
All right, thank you. We've already held the oral communication simultaneously with council. This is reorganization of this board, selection of chair and vice chair.
Keep it the same.
Second, yeah, third.
Second, and the other discussion, seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Member Bredegum?
Yes.
Member Tran? Member Dovin?
Yes.
Member Klavitsen?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
And Chair O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you very much. We'll move to the consent items. We do have a couple items received. This is consent, so both will be handled simultaneously. The annual report of the Industrial Development Authority and then the minutes from last year's meeting, December 14th, 2021. Look for a motion.
Move it.
Motion and a second, call for the vote.
Member Bredegum?
Yes.
Member Tran?
Yes.
Member Dovin?
Yes.
Member Klavitsen?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Chair O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Any matters? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn until the next regular meeting, which will be December 12th, 2023. So we don't have a lot of work to do on that. Just so you know, if anything did come up in that time, we could have a meeting, but it's basically to keep that authority open in case there was any state, anything we needed to do with the state on that. We'd bring it forth. Thank you, back over to council.
All right, we'll reconvene. City council takes us on to consent items. We already took action on 5A.
Move the balance.
Okay.
Second.
Call to vote?
Councilmember Bredegum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Councilmember Dovin?
Yes.
Councilmember Klavitsen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, public hearings, item 6A, this is a second reading.
Mayor Jones, you'll want to open the public hearing before we read the title?
Sure, we'll open the public hearing.
And I don't have any speaker cards, so anyone else?
Do you need to read the thing? I was sort of waiting.
Once we close the hearing, we can.
What's that? Oh, okay. Got it. Okay, anyone wishing to speak on 6, specifically on 6A? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Okay, so the title for item 6A is the public hearing and second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2940, adopting the 2022 California Building Codes, Building Standard Codes with modifications. Ordinance entitled, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, amending Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code and adopting by reference the following primary codes with certain amendments, deletions, and additions thereto. California Building Code 2022 Edition, California Residential Code 2022 Edition, California Electrical Code 2022 Edition, California Mechanical Code 2022 Edition, California Plumbing Code 2022 Edition, California Energy Code 2022 Edition, California Fire Code 2022 Edition, California Existing Building Code 2022 Edition, California Green Building Standards Code 2022 Edition, California Reference Standard Codes 2022 Edition, and certain secondary codes, including the International Property Maintenance Code 2021 Edition as published by the International Code Council, and the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code 2021 Edition as published by the International Code Council.
Got it. All right, colleagues, motion second, this is a second reading.
I have a question for staff. On a second reading like this, can our new council members vote on this as well? Yes. Okay. I mean, the introduction is only for the public to understand that there is an actual adoption coming on the future agenda. That being said, I'll move it.
Call to vote?
Councilmember Bredegum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran? Councilmember Dovin?
Yes.
Councilmember Klavitsen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All right, items for consideration, 7A.
Item 7A is authorize the issuance of a purchase order to National Auto Fleet Group for four new Public Works Department utility body trucks. And Mr. Bill Murray is here to provide the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, city council is being asked to authorize a purchase order to National Auto Fleet Group for four new Public Works utility body trucks. These trucks are needed in the water and streets divisions of Public Works. In general, the trucks are replacing older trucks that have either exceeded the industry standards for mileage, age, other considerations could often include inability of repair parts and excessive need for repair on a particular vehicle. The city uses a national competitive bidding organization called Sourcewell to select the lowest bidder for vehicles and other equipment. In this case, that's National Auto Fleet Group. The cost of all four vehicles is just over $461,000, and there's no impact on the general fund. Should the council decide to authorize the purchase order tonight, the city can place its order with the National Auto Fleet Group and will receive the trucks well before the end of next year. It's about eight months to a year lead time on trucks now. The purchase order will be funded using the fleet management fund. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available. Should you have any questions?
Thank you, Bill. Any questions?
Just a question, just to clarify, when we see that number for four vehicles, each one of these trucks has significant up, what would you call it?
It's the utility body.
Utility body, they're made specifically for that use. So that actually sometimes costs more than the actual truck, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Like, the animal control trucks got quite an extensive utility.
Just so the public understands, it's more than just a truck. It's a fully outfitted Public Works vehicle, yeah.
That's correct.
Thank, thank you.
I have...
George, go ahead.
Sounded good. Yeah, I was looking on the ones that are getting replaced. There's one that has over 216,000 miles on it.
Yeah.
So these need to be replaced. They're, yeah, they're getting up there, so...
The truth of the matter is, is we need 11 vehicles to be replaced, but the ordering capacity, because of the supply chain issues, it will only allow us to get four. So we selected the four that we need the most.
I have questions.
Please.
How many vehicles we have in our fleet as of now without these four delivered yet?
Without these four for the entire fleet?
Yes.
We have, I think it's over 200 vehicles.
Okay. So with these four being added, say, by the end of next year, in eight months or so, and you say we have needs for about 11, right?
Correct.
So we're still short seven or somewhat, the numbers, right?
Correct.
When do you intend to put in a new order for the next purchases?
The next purchase, it will, as soon as we're able to get permission through the Sourcewell to do that, I mean, it isn't that the, it's that we're having a supply chain issue from Ford or whoever we're getting them from. That's, that's the issue.
Okay.
So it's up to the manufacturers, when they are able to produce the trucks, then we can order more. I mean, as an example, we use police Ford, the police Ford Explorers for the police department. We placed our order and got it in before some other municipalities did. And we have been recently receiving inquiries from cities up north that didn't do that to get access to our additional police vehicles. If we, meaning if they want to buy them from us because they can't get them from Ford right now.
So you're anticipating sometime next year, you're going to put in a new order as soon as supply is available?
As soon as the supply is available, we will order.
And how much abouts thereabouts does the next purchase order in the amounts?
We'd have to look at each one as it comes up. The problem is, is if you looked into the attachments, it's a complete spec for each vehicle. And sometimes, like, the truck front is usually about, you know, I can't remember, like, $40,000 for, you know, or up to $60,000, depending on which F-300 or 350 or 250, whatever we get. And that's what's required for the job. So without looking at each specific one, I'd just be guessing at the price. And to be quite frank with you, the cost for vehicles over the last year has really gone up. Our police vehicles went up, I think, $20,000. We used to get them for $29, and now they're going for $49? Just for, you know, a Ford Explorer.
Okay. Last question. In selecting these vehicles to purchase, do you consider green or electric vehicles or otherwise more efficient?
Our consideration for that right now is tempered because we do not have the electrical infrastructure to support green vehicles. And to kind of highlight that, we were instructed to purchase two, in our smaller vehicles that we use just to run around, and it's for the office staffs, we got two electric vehicles because of a state grant. And we plugged them in and set up the charging stations at the yard. And when they were both plugged in and charging, and we tried using the electric lifts in the garage, they tripped the breaker and everything shut off. So I had to, while I got a great deal on a grant, and we're always pushing for grants, and we saved, I think, about $30,000 or $40,000 on the purchase of these two vehicles. I had to put in another $30,000 to upgrade the electrical system at the yard just for two Chevy Bolts. Just the newer little, it's just a little car. So I can't even imagine what the infrastructure costs will be to provide for electrical charging for large construction vehicles. And I'd also like to point out, it's not often mentioned, is that we have over 100 years of development in gasoline-powered products. They are efficient. Just nobody wants to admit that.
Yeah, I just have one more question. Well, probably two. The money for these trucks is coming out of the Vehicle Maintenance Fund, correct? Not the general fund?
That's correct, but, you know, that's, depends on each section. And so if you have a section that's funded by general fund, then their contribution into that account is from the general fund, so...
So basically, if I'm not mistaken, the way the Vehicle Maintenance Fund works is over the lifetime of these vehicles, we budget so much a year to go into this vehicle fund. That way, when it comes time for replacement, the money's there that we can replace it.
Yeah.
And that's no different in this circumstance, correct?
None whatsoever. The vehicles will range in age where we calculate how much we need to collect from 10 to 15. When we were in charge of the fire trucks, those had like a 20-year lifespan on them. Thank you. And I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I have a, well, actually, one note and one question. So the first note is, thanks to Scott, our city manager, and Maria for going over with me about this yesterday. And when we review, I have a question about why did you pick this four vehicle to replace? And they gave me some information from the attachment, but my question to you would be, one vehicle only have 69,000 mile. So could you tell me, tell us, like, why did you pick that one for replacement?
Some of the vehicles don't get a lot of mileage, but they get a lot of use. So while we're not putting on a lot of road mileage, the vehicle just will physically break down over time. And, and like I said, mentioned earlier in the report, looking at, looking at all of them, it's either going to be like basic metal fatigue issues. I mean, this thing is just flat wore out, or we can no longer get parts for it. Most of the major manufacturers are only providing replacement parts for about 10 years. And then that's it. So I don't know the age of that particular vehicle. It's an... Oh, you pulled it all up, yeah.
Two of the vehicles are from the year 2007.
Those, they went up to, what, three, four years ago? So it's just one of the things of dealing with it. But I mean, our guys use the trucks. They get beat up. And over the span of, you know, this is, this is well over 10 years. So it's just time to get rid of them.
That would be like a boom truck or a crane truck, where you drive it somewhere, you sit for days or weeks.
Idle it for a long time.
Well, it idles or it does a lot of mechanical work at a specific situation.
Our animal control trucks, you know, because of the air conditioning system, you know, it's like a police vehicle, that, you know, they, the police officers really like to have them on and ready to go. And the animal control truck is constantly just sitting and idling because you have to have the AC unit on for the animal. And the animal control truck is constantly just sitting and idling, because you have to have the AC unit on for the animal. So it's, you know, if they come in and they're doing paperwork, or they're getting equipment to go on another call before they head to the shelter, you know, the truck's sitting there for twenty or thirty minutes, just idling with the air conditioning going on. It's not racking up miles, but it's, you know, certainly got a lot of hours on the engine.
If you already have your analysis, and you have the information that you cannot fight part for this, I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to add just one thing. It's more of, not a question, but informational, on the fire authority, we used to be looking one year out, you know, two years out on purchasing fire apparatus. Now we're looking, because I sit on the budget and finance for the city here, and now we're looking at a two-to-four-year plan on buying a fire truck, because we can't even get it, it takes two years just to get the truck. And, right now, with the inflation and the material shortages on parts, it's extremely difficult to keep everything running, so I can sympathize with Bill, because over the fire authority, we're dealing with the same thing. We have to order fire trucks and other apparatus two, three years ahead of time. Now, one good thing is you can buy it early and maybe get it at a cheaper price, because it's not going to be any cheaper. I think it's always going to get more expensive. So you can plan ahead, so please plan ahead for the next couple of years and put in your request, what you want to buy.
All right, I believe we have a motion in a second.
Motion. I'll second it.
Okay. Call to vote.
Member Bredegham?
Yes.
Member O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran? Councilmember Dovin?
Before I vote yes on this, I'd like to comment, is he leaving, or?
Vote, Bill.
It's okay. I still want it on the record that I'm all for planning ahead, and in this case, I agree with this purchase, with no objections at all. In the future, though, I would like to budget for infrastructure upgrades, what you mentioned about the EVs. And, of course, it always comes at a cost to receive those vehicles, and then to support it, be able to support it, maintain it with the infrastructure. And I like that you've already investigated and have experience with it, but I would not back off that upgrade, if we need to, to support the new technology. So I would highly encourage that, and be ahead of the curve as far as putting in orders, so that, of course, we we are kind of held hostage by the supply chain, but as soon as that is relieved, maybe put in right away, so we're not without vehicles. And I like the fact that the vehicles are getting used, well-used. And that means the citizens are getting serviced. So that's a very good note, and I'm going to vote yes.
Councilmember Klavitsen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All righty, thank you. That takes us to matters. We don't have any listed, so we'll go around the horn. George?
No, just, you know, thank you, District One, for re-electing me. We, and congratulations to, I'll say this correctly here, Joe Dovin, and Cindy Tran, for your election to the council. I look forward to working with you.
Yes, likewise, congratulations to you too.
And lastly, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Congratulations, looking forward to serving the next few years with you. I just have one item, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody, there is a toy drive. It's the Brown Descents Orange County Car Club. They meet at the Orange Baptist Church there on Orangewood and Dale, near Rancho Alameda's, this Saturday from ten to two, and it's a toy drive and giveaway in the same day. So they have the car show in the big parking lot there at Orangewood and Dale. And then you can come by and leave a toy, look at the classic cars. From ten to two, they'll receive the gifts, and then at two-thirty, they start distributing them to the kids that are there. So it's the Brown Descents, you've heard of them, come here before, and just wanted to remind everybody, that's this Saturday at ten AM at Orangewood and Dale. So if you can bring a toy, to see those kids light up when they get those gifts is amazing.
I want to say thank you for the support from everyone, especially the staff. I just saw only a couple day, but they showed me their amazing effort, even though I asked them question, it was late, six, seven PM, but they still there, Maria and Scott said, "Don't worry, we will," you know, I just, "Oh, no, it's just too late," but thank you so much for your dedication. And I'm looking forward to work with this more. I'm so excited, I cannot wait, so thank you.
Stephanie?
I just want to congratulate our new councilwoman and councilman. Thank you both for your service and your willingness to want to run for council, and now here you are, and I'm excited to work with both of you. And I think it's going to be a great few years for all of us on the council. George, congratulations on your reelection. Mayor Jones, congratulations on your reelection. And I also just want to make mention of Councilwoman Tuha Nguyen and Fat Buie, Councilman Fat Buie. Thank you so much for all your years of dedicated service and leadership. It's been an honor to work with you both, and I know I'll still see you around in the community often, so thank you.
Hi, I'm here. This has been quite a journey for me to be here on the dais and join a very respectable team. We have kept the peace in this city for quite a while with you, under your leadership, so I'm proud to be able to join you. I see it as a partnership, not just us here on the dais, but the citizens, the staff, our family, our friends, and even the cities in our surrounding county. We're in a partnership at all levels of government, as well as with our constituents, and together. And I look forward to being a good partner and being able to serve this city well, especially with the current staff, and I've met each and every one of the executive team. And I appreciate everything you've done. Some of you go all the way back to when my wife was on council. And then eight years under Fat Buie and Tuha Nguyen, we've been served very well. And I say that for all of the citizens that are not here today, who may be watching on Channel Three, and he'll be surfing the archives, and they want to know what a newly-elected councilman, Joe Dovin, thinks about the city and his principles in working in the city. I'm a public servant. I'm not here about myself. It's about a partnership. I've lived here as a long-term resident. I want to bring this city up, just like you have. And you have contributed much more than I have, so I'm very much humbled. And lastly, I want to give a call-out to my own community. As a Vietnamese refugee, I wear this Vietnamese heritage flag very proudly. And many was here tonight, earlier. They are former officers and citizens of the Republic of South Vietnam. And if it wasn't for their support, I wouldn't be here. So I have to thank directly those who have been instrumental in electing me, and I will never forget that I served them. And also everyone here today, including, I'd like to thank Maureen Blackman in name, because I reached out to her and asked for her support. And I asked for her continued support, as well as the associations and organizations that you represent, because that's instrumental. We're here to represent you, but I'm deferring to you for leadership as far as putting things on the agenda for us to work on. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow council members.
Thank you. City Manager Scott Stiles?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just two quick items. First of all, congratulations to everyone that's been re-elected, and the new council members. For staff, it's exciting for us too, when new people come on, and we've enjoyed working with Councilmember Tran and Councilmember Dovin on orientation and getting up to speed. There's, as I mentioned to them, it's a lot to take in, and I've been doing this a long time, and I'm still learning things all the time myself, and it just, it's a lot of reading material. The public doesn't really understand that, but it's a lot to take in. So we're looking forward to the New Year as well. I just want to remind the public that City Hall is closed December twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, and so of course, our council meeting on the twenty-seventh is closed. Our next council meeting will be on January tenth. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. General Counsel, any need for a closed session, or anything to report out?
Nothing from, nothing from me, Mayor, but congratulations to you who have been re-elected, and the new as members, looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Okay, sadly, I would like to close tonight's meeting in memory of Bob Palmeroy, husband of our beloved city clerk Terry Palmeroy. Bob passed away from COVID-nineteen and pneumonia. Bob lived in Garden Grove for over forty years, raising a family and running his wedding photography business. Not only did he leave behind a legacy of creating beautiful memories, he was also a structural mechanic at McDonnell Douglas. His work on the C-seventeen was always a source of great pride. Bob was dedicated to his wife and children, Diana, Liz, and Ken, and they will miss him deeply. My sincere condolences to the Palmeroy family. And with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.